Did you guys have a chance to look at previous minutes from our last meeting? Any corrections or additions to that?
Both good.
Second?
Aye.
Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any additions to tonight's agenda then? Just what we said about street assessment for the auditor. Anybody else? If not, we'll take a motion to approve agenda for tonight.
I approve that.
Joe, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, no visitors tonight, good. We'll go right to Bill then.
Um, I want you guys standing on Main Street up here, that sidewalk started to heave by the fire hall. I'm gonna put some cones there, what do you think if we do there, Andy?
I'll have to take a look at it again, but I don't know if we can shave it that far or not, but though, you know, if you grind it down, is it gonna keep heaving or not? I just, I told Lauren the last I seen it was like a month or two ago. And so it was before the frost started moving, so I don't know what's going on there.
Is this the first year it's come up like that?
I think so.
If you mind, I did Saturday, we were working on the ice. And happened to be standing at the corner talking to Ardell, and Ardell said, "Look at that sidewalk." Turned around, I was surprised, I guess.
It's close to the library, so I don't go over there.
But it's just that piece that, when they took that corner out to put that handicap access in, that's the piece that's lifted up. It mustn't be dulled to the rest of that sidewalk at all.
It can't be, yeah. And I'm sure they put that little buffalo board in. Buffalo board between them.
Expansion.
I guess now we'll have to get Rick or Jayden or whoever over here. I guess, I don't know if anyone does concrete anymore over here today. Anyway, we gotta take it out and after the frost is done, I'd say just leave the cones there for now.
Would that be something, I don't know if it's possible or not, but can we take that center concrete thing out that's taken up?
We have tried, in fact, we wanted to pour it with a piece of plywood underneath so we could just push it out of the way when they were done, remember?
That would just, mine would have had the whole corner wheelchair, they had that one.
Yeah, I don't know if that would.
No, we had to have that for a grand purpose, yeah, for.
Well, I wonder what would happen, I would report that corner, just take them out, take that one out now. Let's see if anybody says anything.
When I was watering plants, it was just, oh, this is a wheelchair ramp, I'm breaking my neck.
What is it, the ADA you have to contact or?
Yeah, sure.
And I don't like to screw it, then you and I went out with him once already.
I think.
You know, maybe we could talk to like more engineering and just see if now we could, if we could sneak by and try and do it now.
I think for now, I think we just wait for the frost to get out. We've owned it, so as far as safety goes, we've got something there.
Try and figure something.
Wait and see what happens once frost gets out and then go from there. I would like this.
We can talk to Warren then.
Yeah, in the meantime.
Because I'm sure we gotta talk to him about approving that thing tonight anyway, to let him know we did, so, okay. Anything else?
I talked to the highway department guy, the guy out of Valley City that's head guy for this area. As far as Main Street, if there's any curb and gutter, the cities are responsible for the maintenance. So that would be filling these potholes over there, tarring it, filling the cracks. Stuff like that.
On the actual street?
On the highway over there. From the stop sign to, what is it, Fourth Avenue there, or Spruce.
Really?
Yeah, that's what we supplied.
Thought it was a state highway.
But it is a state highway.
And we're responsible for repairing.
Right. Because what was it, two years ago, what, they were tarring the highway and they stopped right down here and then they went south. And we weren't sure why they didn't come all the way through. And so then I talked to the guy in Valley City, he said generally in city, if there's an highway running through the city, it's the city's responsibility to maintain it. So, I mean, what do you guys wanna call them?
I've lost money on that bet. What, what do we do for the potholes? You got coal mix, hot mix?
Coal, we got a pallet of it, I ordered last fall.
Well, I guess I wasn't aware that, I thought they took care of all that, but.
I thought so too.
And apparently so did more engineering, because they said, obviously they never brought that.
Don't worry about that.
They would know that, unless we talk to them or go with them.
Because there's some, it's a good ones down there by Cleaverlands, just as you come up the highway.
There's one good one right over there too.
That's weird, Warren Sharon didn't say to go over it, he walked everyone under the road.
Well, I don't, we're not, I don't think we're responsible for like resealing it, you know, as far as chip sealing and stuff.
But you said when they were repaving these.
Just maintenance more or less, just tarring and tar or.
Oh, gotcha, just the maintenance.
I'd say maintenance more or less, just the cracks and the, you know, holes and.
We should probably get ahold of them, see when they're planning on doing anything with it then, before we visit, like this year, next year? So it's not like the whole thing's in great shape, if you ask me, but. If they're gonna plan on coming and resurfacing, you know, whatever.
Probably wouldn't hurt, or it wouldn't hurt, find out what their schedule looks like.
Okay.
Is the tarring, is that quite good on this stretch?
Um, I would say, I don't know what the barrels, what a barrel costs right now, I guess, I haven't ordered any. Last time we did it, it took a whole barrel to do it, but the cracks are a lot wider now than they were four years ago. I would imagine it's gonna be at least two barrels.
Well, I say we see what their schedule is and see what's, you know what I'm saying? And see what we should, how much we should stick into it.
You know someone at the State Department that you called about this road or?
Yeah, the guy in Valley City.
Okay.
The guy that I called.
Why don't you give them a shout and you say, you know, what's the maintenance schedule for this road out here as far as topping it or whatever? Check in and just, you know, maybe they would even sell us some tar, a barrel of tar, cheaper. Because it's a state highway, we'll do the maintenance on it, but, you know, help us out here. I don't know, I don't.
We did get the tarring machine, I don't know if I brought it up last month or not, but tarring machine is sitting up there at the shop. Want to take a look at it or? Nice machine, bigger than I thought it was gonna be. Added up my hours, I guess, from over Jan or December 17th till this last storm, was right around 170 hours of snow removal.
Did you have to get that? Excuse me.
Nope.
I read that reimbursement done, that snow removal that the state has. And sounds like we gotta have receipts for all that.
What the problem is gonna be for us is they never separated anything. You have to have four years of showing snow removal. Our town did not separate it out, so when he was getting paid salary, he just went out and worked, so it was never put in there as snow. So you have to have four years of snow removal, your last four years for snow removal, receipts. And we did not put it, it was not put in the computer that way.
So what about this year we did?
This year, Bill had a book and he, ever since all this snow started, he's done it the way so that if we have to do this again, we can. But I think Lauren, you talked to Daniel over there about it, didn't you?
I talked to a guy at the state.
Yeah, because we, I told him right away, we don't, no, we didn't separate snow removal, he goes out and works for the salary. Tom goes out and works and it was just put all this out of the way.
Understand, but you already told him that we don't have the records?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, you told him that.
I mean, I was talking to Lauren and, but I talked to, what's the merchant of?
Daniel Schwartz.
Daniel Schwartz. And he said there's a lot of towns in the same belt.
Understand, now I do, I was thinking maybe, you know, a guesstimation of some sort, but you guys supposed to have receipts and all that. For the four lowest years, it's not, you know, like a, well, we didn't hardly have any snow in '21, last year for. And '19, we had a bunch, you know, so. You go back 10 years, they were keeping records for 10 years, they take the lowest four years. And that's what we, that's what they go. And then what we did this year, they pay 60%, they do something with that, with the 60%. 150% and then 60%.
We don't have those all separated up. We don't have fuel separated up, we don't have the snow equipment. I mean, nothing separated up, up until this year when, when they started saying that. So then Bill, he keeps record of everything. When they're out there, their hours, that's why he can probably tell you how many hours he's been out there, because he's been really dealing.
Now, is Troy Lott Nelson's included in that?
It would be included in that, yes, because we had to hire him for help.
Understand that, but it's included in his also?
Yep, yep, I give him a receipt when Troy gives me it. I take a copy and I put one in our city file and then he puts one in his snow file.
And that includes that 170 hours?
No, that's just.
That's what I thought, that's just my hours.
Just him.
So then you have Tom.
So we.
But they want the four prior years, that's the hand.
It is, it is, that's.
And he said a lot of the small towns are all in the same belt, because it just usually.
We should be careful as much as we say on camera, but I wanna point out something to you guys. Where I read, this year is the only year we need actual records sent in. Previous four, we don't need records, but if it's outrageous, then they'll ask them.
Yes.
So why shouldn't, why wouldn't we just try it? You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I agree.
Give them an estimate.
I wonder if we could get from the weather service, but I don't wanna incriminate them, we kicked this right out of the.
How much snow was?
Like how much snow in the days, approximate days where there was snow occurred and passed?
I'm not sure, do you know who you could ask? Do you know who you could ask would have records of that stuff? Almost some of it, Kevin?
You know, like Jameson, is the airport, is the official recorder?
Was it?
I don't know.
I know they do record. They do record weather and stuff like that, but I don't know if they record any snow removal. Only from the airport. We don't move snow, we don't even look at the airport when the snow.
Well, I'm getting at, they would give us a handle on about when we had snowfalls.
Yeah.
In, let's say, last year from October or November 1st to, they would give us a handle on how.
And how much total. Therefore, we know how much total we get this year, how many hours you used. And take percentage of that, we come to the goals, wouldn't we? I mean, I'd hate to, you know, like you said, we don't wanna get it to the point where $60,000. You know, no, you didn't do that, yeah. But we wanna be in the ballpark.
Seeing like the poll, and the auditor at the poll told me, their employees only keep track of hours that are after hours. So in other words, if they're working eight to five, they don't record that. But if they're working, or start at 2:00 in the morning and work till 6:00, well, that gets recorded as snow removal. Which, I think this is why they put that stipulation in, what I'm reading, is because.
Because a lot of cities.
There's numerous cities in the same belt.
Yeah, because I was a person and I said, we're gonna be out of ballpark for this, because we've got, we've got a hired maintenance guy that gets takes hours.
But it's still the same thing, you could be doing something else and moving snow at 2:00 in the morning too, you know?
Trust me, he is, I hear the backup from my old bedroom. Well, I'm down at 2:30 and go over to him.
I could try, just check with the airport once and Jameson.
And whether it's salary or not, that's all included in the snow removal.
I just think if we get some kind of close numbers together through the last four years, and then we have this year's, which we need documentation, the previous four we don't, unless they ask for it, because we're way out of line.
Yeah, if we wanna go to all the trouble to try and get the snow and the weather and how much total was, or just say, we never kept records, but this year we did? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying we give them a number.
Hopefully the four years.
What we have documented, like you said, you had 170 hours, we send them in what we've been billed from Nelson. I don't, I was, sorry, it's kinda, I don't remember word for word, but if it's fuel, I know there's things that we can't turn in, there's things we can.
Yeah, I was surprised.
Normal maintenance, tires, chains, stuff like that is not returnable.
But the wear bar, I saw, right, the cutting.
Yes, that's part of it.
Cutting it.
Your hours.
So I mean, if we, I don't think that we're gonna be out of line if we had 100 inches of snow this year and two years ago we had 50.
I agree.
And we're in less than half because of fuel.
All you have to do is probably Google that.
So I'm saying we should be able to throw a number in there somehow, without doing a tremendous amount of work, but.
If we got, what, 104 inches this year, we got 48 inches that year, the percentage of that, take that, that's how many hours you put in. And, you know, but it probably snowed seven times to get that 48, it probably only snowed four times to get that 100 inches. So how much are you moving snow, are you moving more snow when it snows more times? I don't know.
We had 23 snowfalls this, this one. 23, this last one was our 23rd.
Well, instead of pushing snow, now you got homework, Bill.
Let's try it, let's just call what's.
Try it again.
You know, just see what, if we get some background to work.
I'm in agreement, absolutely.
I think it'd be foolish not to try it.
Absolutely, any reimbursement.
If we're getting 60%.
Absolutely.
So Bill, you and Lauren and Joe, we're gonna work on this?
I, if you can get some figures together, I'll see if I can get some percentages and stuff like that, sure. See if we can come up with this.
Real good, anything else then, Bill? And, yeah, keep in, did you get some of these copies, so that you know, there's some deadlines or? I, you can have mine, I've got two at home, yeah, I printed out a bunch.
One more thing, does Troy have any other thing than just total hours put in? Because it says something like few receipts, stuff like that.
I think he's just got the hours, telling me, I would think, anything I see is just hours.
Would we?
He charges by the hour, yeah.
I don't think we need all that for him, just for us, correct?
I, I don't know.
Because he charges this one flat rate whether.
Right.
He was a, you know, contractor. I would think.
He's not billing us for fuel.
Yeah, he just bills us, he just bills us by the hour.
I read it, I got it on my desk for two weeks.
As a contractor, I would think.
We can't get reimbursed for the fuel, even though we've gotten reimbursed for 60% of that, you know, it's totally no charge, just as kind of weird. So right now, if we got percentage back for what his hours were above and beyond and Tom, fuel would fall under that, obviously, because it's still costing the city money.
Example of documentation that must be submitted for current year expenditures include time sheets with hours spent on snow removal, clearly marked, equipment logs indicating the dates and hours equipments was used, and snow removal invoices receipts and proofs of payment if applicable. If a receipt invoice has multiple items with it.
This year we have that.
Yeah, this year we have it. Because when he got fuel, he.
Oh, reimbursement items, contractor costs. So Troy would just be a total contractor cost.
Dude, I'll give you that.
I understand one.
Oh, okay.
That's exactly. Equipment rental plus operator fuel and small repairs. That Troy would all put that ball in there. So I think his total cost would cover that.
I think so. Okay, anything else, Bill?
I think that's it.
Okay. And you'll let, well, a few too, and Owen, yeah, will know, because it'll have to be done before the next meeting on the first, what is it, October 1st till December 31st is the first.
It's the first, and then it's October 1st to April 30th.
Then two, it's May 30th.
We have to have this form in by April 30th.
For the first part of, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So that's why I wanted them to have that, so we got the dates.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Or is there, I was just gonna ask you too, that drainage ditch in between, like Bratz and that, is that open? Or is that backing up?
Oh, I haven't been down there today or yesterday, I guess.
Okay, that was one concern I had when I was driving through there, making sure it's not plugged again.
I would think it would be open, everything else has been.
Is it, well, you live right there.
Oh, I just took my truck out of my garage to put it in front of my sidewalks, so people quit walking, because we had company on Sunday because of the the water's not going down to there like it's supposed to, so now it's pulling right in front of there. And now we had two people walk in, they got their feet soaked wet, so I've gotta put my truck there.
So it's not.
It's not flooding.
That's a clear answer, is your house flooding or not? Is your house flooding or not, yeah?
No, my house isn't gonna flood.
Well, in front of it, actually.
It's gonna be the neighbor, but I mean, it was bigger.
We better push it, because there's gonna be a lot of snow there.
Once it starts coming down, it's not, it's not going from my house down.
Is there any other ones?
It's flowing good down by my house, through that, through to that slough. Yep, long bit there. You blew that open and there were two deer laying on the grass this morning, I was afraid that right on, actually.
Any other ones you guys can think of? Or heard about, I guess.
Yeah, that, isn't there a drain by the church? Doesn't that drain underneath the Emmanuel Church that road, that's plugged on this side then, you see that?
It still throws up on the ground.
It's frozen, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's. 24 inch pipe, all the way down into the ditch along Highway 56.
She's gonna be froze.
And I think it's plugged too.
It's not definitely, it's not water, don't get me wrong.
No, the other, I mean, that south side of the road is open.
Yeah.
It's just the north side of the road.
Yeah.
That one's not open either.
Oh, the south side is open?
Yep.
It is draining.
How about the one down there by Shemika's house, is it, is that supposed to be holding water there with the new roads?
Depended on.
I think that one opened up too, because what was it, last week or the week before? There was a lot of water in there, now there's not as much in there.
Did we ever cover that one on the other end by Pats, though? We were talking about getting grate of some sort there.
At Manhole?
Do we need to just hire someone to build it, so we don't? It's coming quicker than we think again.
I was more, what I said, or whatever suggested we do, you know, like stumps.
Right.
So stumps can be built, yes, and there. We could take a look at it.
Well, I'm just, we could get a motion now, just to have someone come in, Double J or whoever, you know, whoever. Maybe Jeff I wants to do it when he's back, but. Because I know you guys are busy, that's not what I'm getting at, I'm just saying, so we get it done, it'd be worse.
What is that called, a drain cover?
There's a lot of snow on it now. There's a lot of snow piled up on it right now.
Okay, yeah.
It used to be called a manhole cover, now it's called a person cover. Seriously.
I get that.
Are we getting new like manholes on all three sides or something?
Yeah, but I know we'll do some work if we can afford it, his estimate was what, 6,000?
I can't remember.
I think we should do it.
That wouldn't be bad, 6,000 and finish that, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be bad at all.
That was for the, for what, now the concrete and everything?
It's just the concrete. Or the concrete and building a mold, and then we build the grate ourselves, that was the plan, and just lay it on top. Something that we could pick up with a payloader or the loader, lift it up, and we have to get in there clean.
I do believe you guys already voted on this? With Rick doing this when spring came?
I think so.
You all already voted on this? For it to be done.
I was just worried about until the meantime, if we need to, just something simple, just to keep shit out of there, or children, you know, we're worried about that, so. Because it's.
And we could, we were gonna build a skid for that tar machine, so we could pick it up, because I think it weighed like 400 or something. So we could just go in with the forks, pick it up and set it on a trailer. So that I could pick up a little bit of iron, just a flat iron and some rod. And just cut it and weld it.
Okay. Yeah, whatever's as simple, but that's what I was wondering, so, Bill can take care of that, then you'll have time if it's.
Yeah.
Okay, just so it gets done before we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else then, Bill? Then you got homework and welding to do.
Ooh, Sherry.
Snow removal, nope, hopefully he's done with that.
Did you call Lindy on that? Oh, that tank, lease on that tank?
Oh, no. That is why, I had a note called Lindy and I couldn't figure out what it was. Lease on the tank. I had it on my desk and I'm like, what, who, what is Lindo? It's like a Lindo.
I don't know if you guys are aware, but, you know, I got that wire welder up there. And, part of my family, more or less. Whatever's up there, if I kick at the bucket, they were just gonna leave it. And I said I'd give it to the city, not thinking I had paid a lease, I think it was a five-year lease, on the Argon tank. And now that lease was out. And, uh, they, uh. Anyway. I'll give the, I'll give the city the welder with the lease to buy, you can buy the tank now.
Or lease it again.
And it's like 300 bucks.
Okay.
Think we, the city could just have the welder.
I think we approved that too.
You did approve that, but like I said on my desk, it was Lindell, call Lindell, and I couldn't remember what the heck a Lindell was for. Okay.
You're giving away your shit, you didn't even kick the bucket yet.
If it happens, it'd be more than, you know, it happens to be $5,000, just so we can get back yet, but if it's 300, I would say go ahead and.
I know it's not very much.
It was.
It wasn't.
And then you own the tank, the city would own the tank, they, it's no more lease. The lease is 200 and some for, I think, three years, they don't do a five-year lease, I guess.
Okay.
Anymore. But I think the city would be better off buying it.
Sure.
Be done.
Okay. Sounds good. Auditor?
Okay, the printer, as you can see, I mean, the computer is up and running. Yeah, it took me a lot, but patience, patience, but it's up and going. The printer, as you can see, is new. Now, our lease for that, our lease, what we pay here for this kind of unlimited, they come out and they put the ink in, they do everything, is the bill's gonna go down significantly, because it's a brand new machine and there's not gonna be a lot of things going wrong with it. Whereas the other ones, we paid a lot each year for them to, I, when all those arms broke inside there, we didn't get a bill for that, because we paid yearly of like $1,100 to, they come out no matter what. So the bill will down on that. Um, it does have color, as you can see, I put a sign on there, nobody touches it, but Bill or I, because we don't want people messing with stuff. Um, so we have that. Now, the other thing was, um, the CDs, I mean, the street assessments. Okay, we already did the first $100,000 in the CD, right? As of today, right now, in that account, is $231,163.12. I am writing out a check right now for $105,411.25. That is gonna give us leftover in there of $125,751.81. Seven cents. Do you want me to take and make another $100,000 CD? So we can make money on this from now till we owe again next year? Um, next year, all right, it'll leave $25,000 sitting in that street assessment account. But the main, the main bill has been paid for the year.
And it's not gonna be due until when?
Next year, this time in April.
But then our CD will come.
All right, we have the first $100,000 will come due on, it's done on, on March, a month beforehand. If I did it right away, right now, I'm getting ready to pay the bill now, so both of them could come out of there.
Sorry, what was the total bill?
That's what figures our yearly bill will be to pay on.
That's about what it's gonna be.
At home, okay.
So technically, after I pay that bill, we've got another $125,000 sitting there. So now we're gonna get money again next year from all of our. So, now, we're gonna get money again next year from all of our people paying, and the reason we're so far ahead is so many people paid off.
And we can't pay it off.
And we cannot pay it off without paying like eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, if we did, if I go put another hundred in there, that one we did already, that one we... we could take out in March if we needed it. If we saw that everybody wasn't paying, good. We could take that out, and we'd still have twenty-five thousand in there, and we've got our bill to pay.
And we've got no surprise payments in between, or nothing that we'd owe for, and we would do this?
No.
I don't see why we wouldn't, and that's...
Because otherwise, it sits here in this account and makes nothing. I can get it, make it four percent.
And you do the twelve-month CD, right?
We... that's what y'all had to do last time, twelve months, so we could, every year, make the decision. And the decisions come out in March and in April, the bills do may first.
Perfect.
So...
That's cool.
Lauren for that one.
Joe's second. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Lauren said yes, Joe?
Second.
Absolutely.
And all in favor. Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, anything else?
Um, no, I'm good now.
Okay. Joe, you got anything?
Um, no, Bill took me out to the water plant, we kinda went around, he showed me how to turn it off, and still, so...
Oh, good.
Pay your bills. Uh, and, uh, this lead service program, you got that under control, or who in charge of that? I just got that.
We just got to approve, um, tonight at our council meeting. Um, this is basically for...
Well, you got that.
The resolution. Do you kind of... I couldn't find that.
Here, I have another one.
This was given to me a damn near a month ago, and I tried reading it again, and I...
Well, it is... What the state didn't wanna do, why we're gonna kind of let Morgan Jerry kinda take over this project, is...
Yep.
State wants... They want us to go around and check every, what we have for service line, whether we have maps or not. If you have maps, great. But you know what the service line is, and if you don't have maps, if maps that we have unknown, we have to dig it up to figure out what it is. That's eighteen inches on that side of curb stop, eighteen inches on their side of curb stop.
Oh, really? You gotta figure out what's going into the house too, from the curb stop, okay.
And then, they also wanna know the date or the year the houses were built, for each house in town that was built.
Holy moly.
So, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of county to probably figure that out. There's... there's other stuff, looks like that this doesn't... Don't really make sense.
This whole thing would be brought up by the state?
Well, it's brought up by the state, but they're being pushed by the EPA.
Okay, EPA, alright.
So, and the EPA don't even know... They don't even have set rules or regulations on what's going on.
It doesn't surprise me at all, yeah.
So...
What I was... What I was told is that we should adopt, is we have to adopt it, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's gonna be able to move us forward, and then what they said they were hoping for in the future is that, like, uh, more engineering would have so many guys around the entire state go around and take care of this, and then they would get paid for it, and then whatever we don't get help with, we would pay them, is that... I thought that's what he explained.
I believe there is money available from EPA.
It sounds like it's gonna be damn near a hundred percent.
The cost.
This is the cost, I'm gonna probably dig up, find out wherever curb stop is, um, you know, I'm saying, go inside the houses, see what's coming in, blah, 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 blah.
And I guess what prompted this thing was that thing that happened in...
Issue given, was it?
Yeah, that bad water.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's, we just gotta...
No one's brought up meeting or two about that line of service and stuff.
It just got more serious, is all that.
Yeah, what's up, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, that's... that's all I got. You got any word on that scheduling for the water tower here, and that?
No, I haven't heard nothing.
I don't even know. We just need a motion to approve the resolution for... I just think we need a motion to approve the resolution for application for lead service line inventory assistance.
Ah, so...
One second?
All second.
All those in favor?
I know.
And this just moves it forward, guys, so that we're basically gonna get help in the future when it comes down to it.
A copy of this is fifty with a more, right?
I have it that goes to them. They sent me one with everything. Yours is blank. They... they filled everything out that needs to be filled out, showed me where I needed things signed.
Is anyone else... Larry, you got one of those?
Yeah, I got one.
I got.
Bill, you must have seen it already?
Yep.
Okay, so you don't need...
Yeah, so, they... more engineering emailed me this with everything already all filled out.
Good. Perfect.
So, that'll... I'll send that back to them.
And we'll get word back from more engineering on how that works, but it sounded like they were just gonna take care of everything, and then
They said it's not, it's down the road that's gonna be done, but they're just getting all the ducks in a row right now. Gonna show all the things signed for it.
Jeff I is not here, and it's... Larry, do you have anything?
No.
Lauren?
No.
Alright, old business, loose dogs, that hasn't got much better, by the way. What... who's dogs? What is the same three over here?
Well, they got rid of one. So, it's two of them now.
I had one in my garage Sunday. Big son of a bitch. That was quite... I had my door open, aired it out. The AR almost came up.
Yeah, those have a leash on, I don't think.
Was it Randy that has been complaining about the loose dogs, is his name?
No, Randy Miller, something totally different.
I think his was for the...
Measuring the street.
Which we still can't get there, so... Uh, to measure how wide that he should be assessed, which we had... Uh, vehicles, snow on streets, sounds like that's all been taken care of.
That's been taken care of, all of the bills have been paid, all the tickets that were given out have been paid now. Um, but I do have somebody, somebody that did get a ticket, is going around and checking when people, when it snows, if people are moving their vehicles and stuff, they wanna make sure they're all getting done.
Okay.
The one thing they did say was about Misty Beard, that her, um, trailer, horse trailer that's sitting there. She's got it moved, so you wouldn't come around that road, you can't see.
Yeah, that... or she's got it, she's got it parked right on the corner. As you're coming up that hill, there's no way you're gonna see a vehicle coming.
So, they wanna...
Like, on the street, you're talking?
Yeah.
It's parked down the street, but it's like...
Does she keep moving it and stuff there?
She moved it, like, finally this week, just to get the snow off the road. And then, that's where she...
But she's got it, the way she's got a kitty cornered around, going around like that, it sits out, out too far, so you might wanna talk to, uh...
Well, let's see, talk to Andrew Kyle and see if there's anything we can do, then.
Well, you... how long can you keep those on the street? You know, she keeps... she keeps moving it, but she, what she does is move it a little bit further forward, from the back, but there's people that like playing it.
People who's smart. I don't know what to... I don't... we can see if there's something we can do, but if she keeps moving it, I guess, I don't know what...
Well, it's always painted yellow in cities, so far this way and so far this way, that you can't park that close to the intersection.
Well, you might wanna look at it, cause it's, when you come to that stops there, you... that block shouldn't even see anything coming.
I think just courtesy, mention something to her and say, you know, Missy, we've gotta have you, da, 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 da.
You go ahead.
Well, I just, the auditor should write her a letter, and that's it.
She's not a letter lady, we'll put it that way.
Not a letter lady. What am I, lettering for? Okay, um, I don't know what to do then.
I would actually say, let's have Kyle or Andrew.
Yeah, there you go.
Have them all enforcement talks.
There you go.
Just try to...
Yeah, absolutely.
And reason whether that...
If she wants to get snippy, they can take it farther. You know? Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, um, so we got that done. New business, approved application, we got that. State-funded snow removal assistance, got that. Uh, permit for Marlene L's...
Billing permit?
Yep, I know, is Randy Miller on the billing permit, or is that something different?
No, Randy Miller is for...
It's a major...
Remember, you told me to put it on next month?
Oh, okay, just in case we could get to it, but that was under fifty inches of snow again. Okay?
Okay.
I guess, put it on, so we don't forget again, then, for next.
Okay, and...
Oh, but we need to approve a permit for Marlene, correct?
Move to approve the permit.
One second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
What's she doing first, possibly?
Um...
Something simple? We didn't have any questions, we're good.
Well, one more application, I gotta take it back to her, because she didn't put a description, but she said it's four thousand dollars worth of work. So, she paid fifty-dollar permit.
I can't...
Inside the house, outside the house?
She didn't put anything in the description there.
Okay.
I do believe it was on the inside.
Okay, perfect. Uh, house for David to buy?
Okay, that's that corner lot down there across from store bags.
Just off of G.
We talked about it a little bit, Kyle talked about it last night.
I didn't know the name, case of Jim.
Well, I... I couldn't remember the name of the house down there. Kyle talked to a little bit about it last month. And David is the one, he... him and his partner bought the house to Sheriff Andrews. He is interested in buying that.
Yep.
Now, I told him, tentatively, what y'all were talking about, we have two years of street taxes that we've paid on it since we, the city owns it. So, the price for it is at least gonna be that. He's willing to pay that, and that's like, what, twelve thousand dollars? He's willing to pay it. He wants it, and he wants to buy it, he wants to tear the house down and put a shop up there.
Perfect.
But, Lauren, did you get to talk to him?
Yes, I talked.
Okay, there you go.
Um... I was gonna call him back after tonight's meeting.
Okay.
I wasn't totally impressed with the guy, cause he was really cutting down our local contractors. He said they're giving estimates that are way, way too high, and on and on. He wants electrical pit. What he sends me is a picture of basically four lines. It... I'm gonna, I... that's why I said, I'm not gonna call him till after this. I can't give an estimate, if, I don't know, if it's two-by-six construction, or if it's steel building, or what the hell is it? You know?
What's he doing?
I wasn't impressed. The other thing is...
Contractor construction.
When I look at that lot, it all lies on a slope. I think before we sign anything, he's supposed to come up here, cause he's going by Google map. He's supposed to come up and see it at site.
Where's he from?
Florida.
Oh.
Because he was really, he was cutting S and S. Well...
They didn't know where the site looks like, though?